Welcome, everybody. Welcome, everybody to the meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and...
So, the first thing we're going to do, our clerk and our regular pro tem are both running the elections. So, the first thing we're going to do is I'm going to read a resolution to appoint Maggie as our clerk pro tem. So, the recommended action is be it resolved that in the absence of the district clerk, the Board of Education hereby appoints Wolford Vice President Maggie Valentine to serve as clerk pro tem for this meeting. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I should have done that first, but anyway, okay. Any opposed? And we'll have you all on.
Trusty McNamara.
Oh, I'm here.
President.
Here.
Failed on the first attempt. Yes, Justin.
All right. So, comments from me. The next meeting of the Halloway Board of Education is going to be on Friday, November 22. We'll actually immediately go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters related to and leading to the appointment of a particular person. In this case, we're talking about a superintendent there. Then, the board will conduct a business meeting on Tuesday, December 3 at seven o'clock here in the middle school high school library. So, again, Friday, we are meeting, but we'll immediately go into executive session. We will make some actions. And then, our next regular meeting is going to be on December 3 at seven o'clock here. And actually, just in terms of one of the things I want to do is just, I mean, I just did it in saying that, but you know, we all will be meeting at 4:30 here in the middle school. High school library will have dinner and we're scheduled actually to go from 4:30 to 7:45. And I've got the agenda already and I'll send it out so people can get a sense of what we'll be doing. And I think the only other thing I wanted to say is thanks to Ms. Jammin and several elementary school teachers for welcoming Maggie and I for the board's annual visit to the elementary school. This is in advance of Ms. Jammin's elementary school report, which will happen at the next meeting. It was great. Yeah, it was really great. So, thank you so much. It was great to have. All right. So, those are actually, I have more things to say later on. Tonight, I think as everyone knows, we're waiting for the results of our referendum vote. So, Mr. Avana.
Just ask one thing. Did we forget to approve the agenda?
Oh, did they?
Yeah, I think we skipped a right. I'm not following online. Is that okay?
Sorry, that's my fault. Yeah. Okay, so let's do that. So, oh, and actually, I want to add some good to the agenda. So, what I want to add to the agenda, and so then we're going to approve the agenda as amended, is under new business. I'd like to add item, let's make it number two, and then we'll do the approval of the votes. Third, item number two is going to be to discuss the December 11th board meeting at Garrison, which Dave invited us to. So, I'm going to add that. So, okay, adding that is the Garrison board meeting. So, would you please read the recommended action plan?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interns superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the agenda as amended.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Sorry about that. Thanks, Peggy. All right, now.
Okay, just two topics I'd like to share with the board this evening. The first is about electric buses. So, Peggy and I, a few weeks back, had the opportunity to meet with representatives from Phillips Town Climate Smart. And they brought something to our attention that was actually very helpful. The EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, about three years ago had a grant program for schools to transition to electric buses. It was very clear at the time that high needs school districts, so socioeconomically disadvantaged districts, rural school districts, would receive priority. In Garrison, when I was superintendent, I actually did apply for this and did not receive it. And in looking at the districts that did in fact receive the EPA grant in year one, they were all high needs districts. And that I understood. However, it's come to our attention that now they are opening this up not only to high needs districts, but to districts such as Howland with our, you know, income and, you know, our level of finances. So, you're not eligible for as much money, but what's interesting is in doing some research and following up on that meeting, I learned this year, the EPA is awarding $170,000 per vehicle for districts such as ours. It would be more for a high needs district. But also, you're able to, if you are awarded that money, you can combine it with a NYSERTA grant for $115,000. No, excuse me, $147,000. So, and this is for a large bus. So, combined, if you could obtain both sources of funding, $317,000. The cost of a large electric bus is around $350,000. So, this would pay for good 85, 90% of the cost. So, the good news is the deadline is January 9. I did become aware of another district, a wealthier district, that actually obtained the EPA grant. Talked to them, found out they used a consultant that it's Hudson Electric, that they'll work with you on the application for no charge and no obligation. The hopes are if you do receive the funding that you may continue to use their services as a consultant. They do provide consultation on putting an infrastructure, everything from, you know, getting the buses on the road to training your drivers, which would be a wonderful thing. But the bottom line is what I'd like to share with the board this evening, and Peggy just signed off, giving us the ability to pursue this application process. My understanding is you're notified around April. That's a little tricky because our budget will be adopted in April. But the good news is you do have a couple of years to implement. So, if the district were fortunate enough to get approved, you do have a few years. So, with that, we can take a closer look at infrastructure. I know Phil Benante already started to examine that and running electric from 9D to, you know, to a charging station that would probably be behind, you know, our campus, somewhere behind the high school area. So, some work has been done. I think we can take a closer look at that and through the budget process, continue to inform the board. But I will say, with these two combined grants, I do think this becomes feasible. Without the two grants, there's a big cost associated with it. So, this is exciting. There's also some money from NYSERTA for infrastructure work, although the district potentially would need to budget for some of that infrastructure work. So, I just wanted to kind of share, you know, early thoughts with the board. This work will happen over the next month or so, and I will keep you informed.
Once you apply for a grant for one bus, can you continue, can you apply for more buses down the road? And it would just be your chances of getting the money are just as likely?
Yes, and what we're doing is right now, we're just evaluating our fleet and sharing that money, that information with Highland Electric because there's certain criteria. A bus needs to be a certain age. It certainly has to be a diesel bus. It needs to make sense as far as mileage and, you know, if it's a brand new bus, it may not make sense. But if it's an older bus with heavy mileage, you can retire that bus and, you know, all that criteria is part of the program. So, it's pretty involved. But I think just at a quick glance and conversation with Adam McNeil, we may have three or four buses that are eligible. So, I think, you know, this first round, we probably could try for three or four buses for starts. And, you know, then in the future, as buses age, you can continue to turn them over. Thank you.
So, I mean, just repeating what Mr. Avana said, but, you know, the this really was the result of a meeting where the Phillips Town Climate Smart folks reached out to us. We invited, I mean, we all got the email. We invited them to come in and have a meeting with us. It was it was a productive and informative meeting.
Okay, and then secondly, I put this in the board's update, but I don't know if you want to have some discussion on it. Commissioner Betty Rosa is joining Putnam and Northern Westchester School Districts. Superintendents and board members are invited. They did ask, they have limited space, so it is in person, and they asked every district to bring a maximum of three board members, but the date is Thursday, December 12. And there are a lot of things happening up at the state level as this board is aware, but, you know, for our community, we have new graduation measures. The state just rolled out. New York Inspires, it's been rebranded, but basically, the region's exam is being phased out. We will, as a graduation requirement, we will continue, we have our high school students here. You missed this one, guys. So, regions, well, however, to make you feel, to make you feel a little better, regions will still be administered. But they will not be graduation requirements. They're going to develop something called a portrait of a graduate. And it will have different criteria. It's not just a formal assessment, but skills like critical thinking, problem solving, cultural and social, social emotional competencies will all be part of this. We don't have all the details yet, but all this will be happening over the next two or three years, and the commissioner is there to discuss that topic and probably answer some questions. And that is a major initiative at the state level. Also, regionalization, which we've talked about before, will be on the topic of discussion. The commissioner, just to remind you, is looking for districts to explore ways that they could collaborate, share resources, become more efficient. I think Howthing already does a great job and our region really does a great job, but maybe there are some new ideas that will emerge from this process. And I'm sure Commissioner Rosa will speak to that. Also, other key topics, school safety, media literacy, mental health, all priorities from state ed, and also some legislative and budget priorities, and I think that will really focus around foundation aid. By this date, the Rockefeller Institute should have completed their study. They're doing an analysis of state aid and how it's distributed. So, it'll be interesting to hear what the commissioner says, because we should have the report by then. So, we don't have to discuss it this evening, but if you are interested and available on that date, Peggy, would you like board members to?
So, Michelle has actually already reached out and so to me and Megan, and I guess we just should have passed that information on to you. I actually can't go because I have to be back in Texas, but I do, I think it's great that Michelle's going to go. And so, anyway, at this point, we have one board member going. So, if anybody else can go, that would be, that would be fantastic.
Is it Westchester?
It's at the Yorktown Heights.
Oh, Bozies, okay.
Yeah, it's at Bozies. And so, it's, yeah, that would be great. So, why don't you, so Michelle's already been in touch with Megan and I, and so actually Maggie, just remember to send an email as well to that, that's, and then it's still, I don't know if you.
I'm going to be in the city on that.
Yeah, and I, I would think of when I talk to Ezra, I'll remind him, but I know that would probably be hard for him. But I think to have the two of you all would be fantastic. These are also really important issues.
And the commissioner, our experience with her, she really does listen. And I think that's part of it too. She will be there really listening to our input. Thank you. Okay, and that's all I have for this evening. Now, I know Mrs. Sniffin.
Yeah, our student advisors. The only thing I just want to give you all a heads up about is at night, I may actually go ahead and sit over here because right at nine o'clock, I have to walk down and close the polls. But I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Sniffin and our representatives from high school.
I think that they're, they're good. Go ahead, Al.
Actually, I need my.
Introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Christian Pereira. I'm the senior class president. So, tonight, I would just like to highlight our Model UN students along with Mrs. Seacor and Mrs. McGrath. The group spent a weekend, the weekend of the 8th, I think, at the 25th Annual Yukon Model UN Nations Conference. The conference focused on fostering international awareness by allowing students to take part in a realistic committee simulations, engage in substantive debate and learn from fellow delegates. Seth Lunenpak, Henry Schwimming, Scotia Hartford, Callie Sniffin, and Max Sanders represented various countries and made substantial contributions by crafting resolutions to address the pressing issues regarding protecting children in zones of conflict. Dylan Ambrose, Anna Nelson, Lincoln McCarthy, Gabe Rotenberg represented delegates in the Social, Cultural, and Humanitarian Affairs Committee. Together, they created a plan to improve prison conditions globally and designed innovative solutions to reduce the criminalization of homeless populations worldwide. Amelia Alian, Josie Foley Hedlin, and Catherine Bautros represented countries of the Commission of Crime Prevention and Criminal Justice. They debated the policing of sexual offenders and recommended solutions regarding how to use police technology in a way that satisfies both personal privacy and public safety. Secondly, the high school student council has organized the annual Thanksgiving food drive. Each grade from kindergarten to the senior class is encouraged to bring a grade specific item for donations to help make a full Thanksgiving meal for families in need. Faculty members, I learned this today, are also encouraged to bring in turkeys for donation. We're bringing in desserts, the seniors, and all the donations go to Howland families in the community who have requested to receive donations. And then, the remaining food goes to the Phillips Town Food Pantry. Jake.
Hello, my name is Jake Powers. I'm the vice president of the senior class, and tonight, I'd like to congratulate Howland High School cross-country team for their record-breaking performance at the state championship in Queensberry, New York. The boys' team placed fourth out of the 10-team race on November 16. The boys' team is made up of seven runners, which includes Jack Illion, a senior, who placed 29th, Henry Amade, a freshman, who placed 75th, Oliver Pecis, a senior, who placed 77th, Gavin Drury, a freshman, who placed 79th, Zane Del Pozo, a junior, who placed 86th, Silas Emig, a sophomore, who placed 95th, and finally, Owen Powers, a junior, with a time of 16 minutes and 4 seconds, finished third individually in the race, setting a record for highest placement of a Howland High School runner at a state championship. The team had one female runner, Ash Sosa, a senior, who qualified for the state championship. She placed 38th with a time of 21 minutes and 17 seconds, setting a new personal best. Secondly, this year's Howland High School drama production of Macbeth will take place on Friday, December 6, Saturday, December 7, and Sunday, December 8. This play features a double cast with the lead role of Macbeth being performed by Lucky Bell and Merrick Williams.
Can we ask, are there other things that the senior class, is it the senior class or the student council that's doing the Thanksgiving food drive?
It's the whole student council.
It's the whole student council. That's great. And what are some other things that you all do either typically or that you think you might do this year?
Something we did do on Halloween is we did a trunk-or-treat behind the high school for the elementary students. We handed out candies from our trunk, we handed out candy from our trunks.
Fun.
It was really good time.
We also helped organize the faculty volleyball game, student-first faculty. I scooped ice cream from like 5:30 to 6:30, I think.
Great.
Jake, that, you just read, you were talking about cross-country. That's your brother who came in.
Oh, was that your brother? I actually went to the regional race at Wapentures to watch him run. Yeah, 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 yeah. I was following it on Twitter, yeah.
You got a cramp in that race.
Oh, no. I could tell, I could tell he was disappointed, yeah.
And then, the kid who beat him in that race, he beat him by around a minute, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Yeah, that's very, it's very exciting. It was very exciting. It was very impressive, the team. Yeah, yeah, yeah. If no one's ever gone to a cross-country meet, I actually highly recommend it. It's a really great way to spend a fall afternoon. And it was really fun watching the boys' team. Oh, I'm glad you made that connection.
Are there any more races coming up for your brother?
He is doing, oh, yes, he does have the federations meet, which he qualified during his state championship. So, yeah, he'll be running that this weekend.
Do you know what federation, like, that means?
The state championship is mainly for public schools. The private schools can't participate. But in federations, which he qualified individually, he can play students from other classes, like double A schools, A schools, and he can also play students from private schools, so.
Yeah, oh, great, great. That Model UN program just keeps on growing and growing. So many kids going on that trip. So, there's some kids who are part of Model UN, but don't go on the trip. Do they help, I don't know if you know, do they help prep, like, they help prep the kids who are going? Okay, so they are still involved in the research and things. Those are very impressive topics. Very sophisticated.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're now at the part of our meeting, the first opportunity for communication from the public. The Halloway Board of Education desires and values input from the entire school community. This first public comment session is reserved for comments on special presentations and active agenda items. For those who wish to address the board, we ask you to sign in, state your name for the record, and to keep your minute, your remarks to three minutes or less. The board discourages disparaging remarks and discussions, or discussions of district personnel. And while we would not engage in dialogue, please know that we're listening and we'd ask for your contact information so that we can follow up. So, next on our agenda, we have our administrative information reports. Thanks to everyone in the administrative team who provided reports. So, next we have the consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next, we have the committee minutes, which is the technology committee. I can't remember who's on that.
I am.
You are, yeah, yes.
And it was good, it was sort of a learning curve, that first meeting, hearing that, like, a horn, everything. There was a lot of, you know, teacher technology and sort of what they're, what they're using to teach and to support students. And the bystander.
Yeah, yeah, no, and actually Maggie mentioned this at a meeting we were at recently. And I just, it's, it's amazing. My son, so I'm trying, it must have been 2015, 14, 13, I guess 2012, which I know is a long time ago, but it's not, it's a little bit more than 10 years ago. He was the very first class of freshmen that had a one-to-one initiative. It was a one-to-one with iPad, and it is amazing, you know, just how, I mean, we all know how much technology has advanced and expanded, but, you know, that's, you know, not that long ago, you know, just one group of kids with one-to-one, and now it's a year. And it's a big, it's a very important, significant job that she has, because at this point, so much of the district's infrastructure relies on, you know, technology and shared files, and it's, it's, it's really, it's something that's really changed. All right, so, I, let's do consent agenda, financial and consent of the personnel, and then we'll go into a recess so that I can close the vote. Okay, so, and so we do consent agenda minutes already, consent agenda, financial. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there anything, I don't think, I didn't see anything here that we really need.
Pretty standard.
All of the children?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And consent agenda personnel.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And, yeah, let me just run downstairs. I'll be right back. Oh, so I'm going to make a motion to go into recess. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll be right back. So, I'm going to make a motion to go back to, I don't know, I thought recessed the meeting, to go back into the meeting. I don't know. I'm moving to resume the meeting. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so now we're going into unfinished business, policy review. Maggie, will you please read the recommended action?
That be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interns superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby waives that right, waives the second reading and adopts following Howland Central School District policy as attached, 7554, equal educational opportunities, and 7555, educational services for married pregnant students?
I thought I saw that the reading was included. Second reading of it. Yeah. Okay, well, let's have a motion and a second, and then we'll talk about it. Yeah, a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, great.
Been amended since the first reading to include parenting students. That was the, it was married and pregnant students, but it did not specify also students who were new parents. So, they changed the title of it to include parenting students, and throughout the entire body of it, it was married/pregnant/parenting students. It was amended appropriately.
Okay, that's great. But I thought this was the second reading of two of these. Well, I mean, it's fine. I think that the main point that we're approving them.
We have, we have it done last time.
Yeah, but I think maybe because it's amended.
Oh, maybe. That may be right.
Yes, 7555, I think we approved it last time, but now it's amended, so.
So, this, okay.
Prove the amended. The approved version.
All right, that sounds good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, moving on into new business, the CSCV CPSC recommendations, where we have the recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interns superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby approves the recommendations of the committees on special education and preschool special education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the next item is the new item that isn't actually written on our agenda, but this is a discussion item that's just about the Garrison Board meeting scheduled for December eleventh. So, and I'm actually gonna ask Mrs. Sniffin to weigh in. So I spoke with the Garrison School Board President, Sarah Carmley, and it sounds like every, so what they're doing this year is they're inviting all the high school students, which they tuition their high school students, to come and give a presentation to the, that, the Garrison School Board. And it sounds like O'Neill always goes. And Julia, I know you give a presentation here at the school. Do you usually go, you don't usually, or do you always go to the Garrison School?
His door, pretty, prior to COVID, I went every year. And then COVID, it kind of stopped. And then it never picked back up, or there wasn't a request for it, but.
And I remember before COVID, we actually used to have, sometimes it was a joint meeting, but sometimes Garrison would come here and they'd have a tour of the high school. And I think, you know, the high school principal would lead it, but it would also be led in conjunction with some Garrison, with some students from Garrison who are Haldane students now. And it was really a way for the board, the Garrison Board, just to hear about, more about their students' experiences at Haldane. And so, again, they instituted this again this year. They're inviting, I guess, O'Neill always goes. They've also invited Penn Valley, and they've invited Haldane. Mrs. Sniffin, you're giving the presentation, and then they also invited board members to go. There was a suggestion that we could hold it as a joint board meeting. I'll be honest, my take is that this is really their board meeting, and we would be going to listen in or answer any questions and sort of be there as representatives of Haldane. Because it really is their, really is their board meeting. It's not like we're developing a shared agenda. It's within the realm of possibility that Garrison and Haldane could have a shared board meeting or do some sort of collaborative activity, but I see this more as really a presentation.
Will it be a discussion about tuition also, the numbers? Or is it really just about what Haldane has to offer their students?
It's really just about what Haldane has to offer, because we actually now have, you know, we have a current agreement in place. I think it's in place for a little while, a couple of, you know. And so this is, it's really about for them to learn more about what, all the fantastic things that Haldane offers our students, yeah.
Yes, is it the same date as the meeting at Bosie's?
Oh, I bet they put that together, yes. The commissioner meeting is December twelfth, this is a Thursday at three. And this is December eleventh in the evening. And so I'm definitely gonna go. In fact, I've made some travel plans around it so that I can go. I think that this is a situation where it's fine if only a couple of us go, or even one or two of us go, but I also think it's a situation, if others wanted to join, because we aren't gonna be discussing Haldane business, but it wouldn't be a problem for them to be there. So I did wanna let people know that this meeting is happening. Actually, I need to confirm the time. I think it's seven, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. And, you know, let people know that this was happening, and then invite those to go if that's something that they wanted to do.
Yeah, I can join you there.
Oh, that would be great. Excellent. Is it seven? Is it seven? So, so, yeah, so. That's that. And so the next item and the last item on our agenda is accepting the results of the special school district meeting for the bond referendum vote. But while we're doing that, I think, rather than go into recess and then come back and do board reflections, why don't we just jump down to, to board reflections, I think now's the next time for us to do that?
Great.
I just wanted to congratulate the high school on being awarded the AP School Honorable Gold Award. And we're starting two new AP courses, the environmental science.
Potentially.
And human geography, potentially.
We're looking at AP Environmental Science and then looking to start with Global Geography, not necessarily at the AP level, but alternate Global Geography with Sociology. So, you know, oftentimes, you know, as a small school, we wanna make sure we provide as many opportunities as we can for our students. So those two courses are at our internal curriculum council right now to go through that process. And then if it goes through that process where we talk through it and kind of have critical friends looking at the curriculum and discussing it, and what does it do to programming, then there will be, part of my presentation will be on those two courses. Because as new courses, the board, you'll have to approve the offering. So I kind of put it out there as like a.
Potential.
Just put it on your, on your radar that we are looking at it. The logic behind, obviously, AP Environmental, there's a lot of interest amongst the students. I think we see it, and it goes on campus, like, there's a lot of different things going on there. But it also provides a course for some of our students that may be accelerated in the sciences and not quite caught up in some of the math. It provides a science that isn't as heavy in math as your physics is. So there's a lot of discussion between the two interdisciplinary, between the math and the science, about how that fits in the sequence for students. So a lot of thought is going into that and a lot of conversations around it. So the two are.
Three.
What grade level does that, would that?
So. Yeah, it would fall more than likely after chemistry. So depending on when you took chemistry, would depend on when you would, you know, potentially take, you know, maybe some students would take, you know, an environmental route, and some students may take more of that physics route, depending on their interest. So it could be, it could be a young sophomore year that they could explore that.
How many AP courses are we currently offering?
I, we are offering fifteen courses that are either AP or dual enrollment. So off the top of my head, I could count them, but I know it's fifteen that are eligible for college credit. Some are eligible for six credits, some are eligible for four credits, and some are eligible for three credits. It depends on the course. So like, AP US History is a six-credit course at University of Albany. College forensic science is a super course through Syracuse, and that's four credits. AP Psych is six credits, and that's through Duchess, so it, they vary. But where AP Physics isn't associated as a dual enrollment with any university, but if you score a three, more than likely a four or five, the university in which you're attending may accept the credit. So it really depends on the school.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
And Dr. Seelke, I'll just say that as a, I have a sixth grader at middle school, and it's, it's always interesting, once the fall ball comes along, to see which fifth graders are ready to lean in to that part of adolescence and which are holding back. And, you know, I know so many of them, so it's, so, it's a, it's a, it's a moment of excitement and fear that goes through all of the parents. And thanks for, you know, making it a very safe environment for them to get their toes wet, as it were.
I just wanted to thank everyone who voted for tonight, who came out today and tonight to vote. And I wanted to thank everybody who shared their opinion. I heard lots of opinions over the last few months, lots of texts, lots of suggestions. And I just, I wish, you know, this level of dialogue to a degree could, could kind of follow us through each meeting. It's just nice to hear feedback from everybody. So as stressful as, as pieces of this has been, and maybe not so much for me as for Maggie and for Carl and everybody who else has prepared for it, it's, you know, it's, I like the engagement with, with people over this course that I don't normally have, and I like, sometimes I wish that could kind of continue through other things that we do.
Actually, so that we're not taking it people's time when the votes come in. With the board, I put together a pretty extensive list of thank yous, and we all agreed, it's the same list, whether the vote is in favor or not in favor, so I'll go ahead and, and read that list now. And then we, we can just sort of talk about next steps, so. I mean, to just to start by reiterating what Maggie said, I think everybody has been engaged in a lot of conversation with, with friends and colleagues and people that we didn't know before, hadn't spoken to before. So along the lines of what Maggie said, and again, this is a collective document written that the board has contributed to. So we want to take everyone who took time to learn more about the project, and especially those who asked questions and shared their input with us, whether it was for or against, or concerned or excited. Every single person who came out to vote, hearing this vote and what the community has to say is really important. If it's, if it's positive, that's one piece of information. If it doesn't pass, that's another piece of information. It's all very useful, and we need that information. I'll have to tell Megan this, but Megan Shields and the election workers who are running a smooth vote today, Megan took care of so many details, everything from making sure months ago that we had the right polling system because we knew that getting voting machines would be difficult because of the, of the November fifth election, to down to ordering future voter of Haldane stickers for all the kids that came with their parents. It was such a fantastic detail. And then just taking care of everybody that's working there. The Campus Master Planning Committee and the many community members who were teachers and staff who were part of that, as well as other community members, teachers, staff, and students who provided input into planning for the referendum. And this, we have to absolutely include Dr. Phil Benante, who was our previous superintendent and the campus master plan, and moving toward this was really something that he led for us, and Mr. Albano has picked up since. CSR, who is our educational architectural firm for their work during the campus master planning process, as well as helping us to plan for the project that we ultimately put forward to the community for this vote. I don't know if everybody knows this, but the district has its own construction manager. This is somebody who is representing our best interests in all of these endeavors. Lou Rodriguez of the Palumbo Group is our district's construction manager, and we have already seen really the fruits of his input and really helping to make sure he brings an incredible amount of intelligence and expertise about the cost of things and the realities of building in a place like ours, and it's been a really important piece of, a really important voice in this process. We thank the village boards and the town board, who along with the Chamber of Commerce, allowed us to present about the project and provided input and questions. Our partner organizations, there's a lot of people to thank, our partner organizations, the PTA, the Haldane Arts Alliance, the Athletic Booster Club, and the Haldane School Foundation. They support the district in so many ways, and we're all really actively engaged in helping to share information. I think we want to share and thank in particular the PTA for their really concerted effort to, to get out the vote. I thank all the board members. I know we were all, I was texting with people, and I know we were all answering questions, and it's, it's, it's been, you know, something that we've all committed time to. Megan Shields, again, who wears so many hats, including that of the district's communications specialist for her extensive work on the website and the newsletter and working with CSR to create the videos and all the communication materials. I don't know how she did all of it. A huge thanks to the administrators and staff, but to Mr. Albano and to the entire administrative team for coming to so many meetings, helping with their work to help finalize the project and their ongoing efforts to share information with the community. So Carl Albano, Julia Sniffin, Christine Jammin, Regina Kation, Catherine Platt, Marion Selfie, Adam McNeil, Josh Elder, and Tom Cunningham. Under the best circumstances, that group of people works harder than I can really imagine, and this was just one more thing to put on their plate, and everybody was always ready to pitch in. I mean, so gracious, and we are so appreciative. So those are the things we put together. I don't know if anybody wants to add something. Yeah.
I think you covered it. You know, sometimes some of you were doing like three, four presentations a day. It's unbelievable.
Between the tours and the different meetings, and really just want to say thank you for, for getting the message out like that.
There was a silent, a group of individuals that maybe became before the master planning process of the old buildings and the old building and facilities.
Oh.
Committee, which is now phased out largely because it was determined as part of the workflow on that and the execution of the previous capital project, that really that was, that committee needed to disappear so that we can move forward the master planning process. And then, you know, should that committee need to reform again in the future to execute projects, it would be, you know, great. But they really, I think, were a voice in Dr. Benante's ear about the necessity to do this, to do the master plan. And they were really key, I think, in starting that conversation process.
I know we all talked to people who just had so much insight, so much insight and questions and thoughts, and really, everybody who weighed in really appreciate it. All right, so at this point, I think I'm gonna make a motion. I don't know how long it's gonna take. I'm gonna make another motion to go to take a recess, and then we will come back. We will resume the meeting when the vote is ready to be shared. All right, so I'm moving to, there's gotta be better language, this is, but to recess the meetings. Apparently, yeah. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, so I'm moving to call the meeting back into session. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we're now gonna hear the results of the special school district meeting for the bond referendum vote, and then we'll call for the recommended action.
Following are the results of the special district meeting of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Proposition twenty-two-four capital project bond referendum passed with seven-hundred-and-twenty-four yes votes and four-hundred-and-forty-five no votes. Seven-hundred-and-twenty-four yes, four-forty-five no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Travis, thank you so much.
Yeah, we'll go give it to Megan. Megan probably will find it. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So. I actually, do you know, did you know exactly what you, do you need to read the whole thing? Are you gonna read it?
I don't know, but I can.
All right, so I don't need this. Okay, so Ms. Valentine, can we have the recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interns superintendent of schools, the board of education hereby accepts the results of the special school district meeting for the board referendum vote for Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, as indicated below. Results of the special school district meeting for the bond referendum vote, shall the following resolution be adopted? To wit, resolve shall the board of education of the Haldane Central School District at Phillips Town, Putnam, and Duchess Counties, New York, be authorized to construct improvements and additions to and reconstruct schools' district buildings, facilities, including athletic facilities, together with original furnishings, equipment, machinery, apparatus. Appertains? Let's see, appertanances and site and incidental improvements and expenses in connection therewith at a maximum estimated cost of twenty-eight million, three-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. And that one million monies from the capital reserve fund shall be used to pay a portion thereof, and that the remaining twenty-seven million, three-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight, or so much thereof as may be necessary, shall be. or so much thereof as may be necessary shall be raised by the levy of a tax upon the taxable property of said school district and collected in annual installments as provided by section four sixteen of the education law. And in anticipation of such tax, obligations of said school district shall be issued. We have, do you want to read the numbers?
Yeah.
Seven hundred and twenty four votes for yes and four hundred and forty five votes.
Alright, so um may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Right. Um. So I guess we'll uh, there's opportunity for a second communication from the public. Actually, does anybody else wanna say anything? The board had a chance to say.
Do I have to sign in?
No, you do not.
I continue to see.
Yes, come, come on. See you on camera.
Alright. I just personally wanna thank the board um for all their hard work um and seeing this project through um for Carl picking up the pieces, um but really also to Phil um for really making sure that this got off the ground. Um, I think there was a thoughtful process uh to help us get to this point. It took two years. Um, it wasn't just willy nilly thrown together. Um, a lot of thought, a lot of thought about the taxpayer and and really trying to do the necessary work and the things that needed to be done. Um, but also I just have to thank Peggy. Um, I think as a board president, you take on a lot, there's a lot on the shoulders of the president and there's a lot of transition um through this project in phase and late nights and late texts. All that work that goes into it, so just thank you. I thank everybody. Um, and yeah, good job.
Um, I have actually, um, we are truly grateful to the community. Um, we're truly grateful to the community members who voted yes, but I actually wanna also recognize that there were you know, people whose votes indicated that they have concerns as we move forward. Uh, the board is gonna continue and the district is gonna continue to think about ways that we can share information about the project and address questions and concerns, right? This is one step and we've been doing this for a while. This is a phase. There's a lot more, you know, for us to do. Um, so we're gonna think about ways to continually share information about the project and address questions and concerns. Um, as always, we always invite people to come to board meetings to share their thoughts and questions or to email us. This district, the current board, our interim superintendent, our previous superintendent, we have a demonstrated track record of responding to and meeting with people who reach out and will continue to do that. Um, and I, and the board will continue to to um be the best stewards for our community's finances that we can be. And I think, you know, we're all um really excited about this project and what it will bring for our students, um staff and community. So there's anything else? Um, any uh one more thoughts from the superintendent?
Sure, I I mean I'm very pleased. I think we we did our very best to get out and communicate, not not just with parents, but with the community, uh going to town hall meetings and village meetings and Chamber of Commerce meetings and mailings. It 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 it's a challenge to get to everyone, but I I do think we we made a strong effort to do so. Uh, I hope people see it that way. Um, and yes, Peggy and I granted meetings to anyone who requested meetings. I thank you because um you've been putting in many, many hours and and also our construction meetings. And Maggie and Peggy have joined the admin team, talking with CS Arch and our project manager, just making sure this preliminary planning um is is going well. And I would strongly recommend that we continue that. Maggie, earlier you talked about engagement. I I think having our architects and project manager come to board meetings regularly, you know, when when it calls for uh providing updates to the board and the community, I do think that would be a good idea as well. Just making sure people are updated. Um, but the work begins now and we have an admin meeting planned for Friday morning with CS Arch. Um, and we're excited to get started.
Alright, alright, so um I move to adjourn the meeting. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.